Okay. City Council Workshop Regular Session, Thursday, March 20, 2025, 5:45 PM. City Hall, 3300 Corinth Parkway. View livestream at www.cityocorinth.com backslash remote session. I call a meeting to order. At this time, what I'm going to do is we're going to have, I'm going to have Kelly Pickens. She's going to introduce the group that's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. But before we do that, I wish everybody stand for the invocation by Mr. Garber.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we come before you this evening humbled and grateful for such a wonderful place to live. We thank you for your hand during this election season, as well as your grace and direction. And Lord, we also ask that your Spirit would help guide us this evening in our proceedings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Go ahead.
I'd like to welcome the student council members from Hawk Elementary that are going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance and our Texas Pledge. So guys, y'all want to stand up and start the pledge for us?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to be Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible. Good job, guys. Good job. Does anybody want to make a comment?
I want to get your pictures taken with the mayor.
Let's go.
You guys, thank you. I love you. You miss when you're not. I know. Listen, we got some free.
You guys did a good run without council behind you, okay?
It'll be a great job.
It'll never be bad.
That's, that's kind of there. That's the end.
I'll make an official citizen's comment. My name is Katie Beth Bruxford. I just wanted to thank you guys so much for allowing these kiddos this opportunity to do this. I think it's so important for these young kids to learn about local government at an early age, and it starts here. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. And you're always welcome here in the City Hall. So if you ever want to come here again for another council meeting or public hearing or anything, you're always welcome here in City Hall. Okay. Citizens comments. No citizens comments, okay. Consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pull item number five and number seven.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Home favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, okay. Items five and seven are pulled from the agenda. Then I'd entertain a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda.
May I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Business agenda. Hold a presentation, discuss, and take appropriate action to accept.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If we could get a motion to, on items five and table them to the April 3 meeting.
All right. I'd entertain a motion on items five and seven to be tabled to the April 3 meeting.
I'll make a motion to table those until the next meeting.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. Votes, boys? Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Garber? Ms. Rell?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Pickens?
Thank you. Sorry for the mistake. Business agenda. Hold a presentation, discuss, and take appropriate action to accept annual external audit and the annual comprehensive financial report presented by Edie Bailey, LLP. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Leanne Bunzelmeyer will introduce this item, introduce our auditors, and we'll answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Well, I am proud once again to announce that we have received a clean audit. There's a lot that goes into preparing the audit, and I'd like to recognize two of our staff members that take on this task every single year and do a fantastic job for the city. We have Dawn Taylor, which is our controller, and then also Linda Toms, which is our accounting manager. I tell you, I would not like to go through a year end without those two ladies. They're absolutely wonderful. With us here tonight, we do have Kevin Randolph. He is a senior partner with Aid Bailey, and he will go over the CAFR presentation for you, oh, excuse me, the AFCR presentation for you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Kevin Randolph. My address is 1000 County Road, 322, Comanche, Texas. I'm with Aid Bailey, and my firm performed the financial statement audit for the fiscal period ended September 30, 2024. I'm here to go over the results of that audit, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. With that, I'll get started my presentation. First, I want to go over the opinion, which the object of an audit is for us to give our opinion on your financial statements. And we did issue an unmodified opinion this year. That's what we call a clean opinion. It means that we found that the financial statements were consistent with generally accepted accounting principles. So a good, clean audit. We did have one item on the opinion I wanted to point out was a correction of an error in prior year. During the current year, the city identified certain developer contributions that belonged in fiscal year 2023 but had not been recorded. They notified us of that when they found out, and we incorporated that in the 2024 audit as a restatement of prior year, and that was approximately $4.2 million that should have been recorded last year, but now is recorded this year. And the city has taken a corrective action plan to correct that in the future, I believe adding some staff to oversee that, and then having quarterly, quarterly meetings with the appropriate staff just to make sure they capture all the contributions in the future. So we were satisfied with that. I'd also like to point out that management of the city is responsible for the financial statements, including the internal controls over preparation of those financial statements and the actual preparation of those financial statements. As auditor chair, our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements and to provide reasonable assurance that those financial statements are free from material misstatement, and we think we have done that. I'm going to go through the numbers briefly. Look at cash and investments briefly. So citywide cash at September 30 was $24.646 million. Now, that's citywide. That's going to include all the governmental funds, and then it will include the business type activities, which would be the water and wastewater fund and storm drainage. So total was $24.646 million. Governmental activities, which is the various funds, totaled $11.804 million, and the business type activities was $12.842 million. And within the governmental activities, general fund cash was $1.872 million. Investments citywide totaled $34.097 million. The various governmental funds totaled $23.95 million, and the business type activities totaled $10.146 million. And again, within the governmental activities, general fund investments were $8.777 million. Of the investments held, $25.103 million of that was held with Techstar, which is a state investment pool, and then $8.994 million is with various U.S. government-backed securities. Go over the general fund briefly. At September 30, total assets in the general fund were $14.268 million, approximately $10.6, so that's cash and investments. There was approximately $3.6 million of receivables. That's amount that you had earned but not yet been paid in cash, and the biggest piece of that was for warrants and ambulance, and there's also some sales and property taxes. Total liabilities, $3.693 million. That includes accounts payable of $922,000, which is amount owed here to various vendors that had not yet been paid. Accrued liabilities for payroll and compensation of $378,000 approximately. Other liabilities, $1.167 million. A biggest chunk of that is amounts due to the state for warrants and deferred inflows of $1.226 million. That's where money's owed to you, but you have not yet earned that revenue, so we can't show it as revenue, so we show it as unearned revenue. That's for leases, where you're leasing assets to others for revenue, and then taxes and warrants and ambulance. Just money's owed to you, but you can't yet call it revenue once you get paid and it becomes revenue. Fund balance for the general fund was $10,575,307. $57,000 of that relates to inventory and prepaid assets. We have to set that aside as non-spendable, but the overwhelming majority of the fund balance of $10.518 million is what we call unassigned fund balance. That means it has no legal restrictions, and you haven't set it aside for any purpose. It's just, it's available to meet the general fund's ongoing obligations. One thing we as auditors look at is we like to look at your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures, and your percentage this year was 43%. In our opinion, that's a healthy number. We'd like to see something above 25%. If it's 25%, that means you've got basically three months that you could pay your expenses if no further revenue came in, and you're well above that, in our opinion, a healthy number. General fund revenues were $27.559 million. Taxes, sales and property taxes, was $16.5. Development fees, $3.2 million. Fire service, $4.2 million. Expenditures were $24.416 million, and the net change was an increase in general fund balance of $3,41,761. This is good, healthy growth in the general fund balance. I'd like to point out sales tax. Sales tax in the general fund was $2.555 million. The EDC was $1.263 million. Crime control and prevention was approximately $604,000. Fire district was approximately $566,000. That's really all I had for the ACFR. We did perform an additional audit this year. Since the city spent more than $750,000 in federal grant expenditures, we have to do what we call a single audit. It's a grant compliance audit. And the big program for you this year with the federal program was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program. That's a mouthful. So that's some of the COVID money that's been out there the last few years. You spent more than $750,000 of that, so we did another audit. And what we're doing there is we're looking at the internal controls over grant compliance. If you have a federal grant, there's things you have to spend the money on, there's things you can't spend the money on. We're just making sure that you have good controls to make sure that money's being spent properly, and we had no issues with those controls. And then we pick an actual sample of transactions and make sure that those were spent on the appropriate things under the grant agreement, and a good, a good, clean, single audit, no issues there. That's really all I had. Be glad to take any questions. Before I do that, I would, I would like to echo what Leanne said. I would like to commend Leanne and the staff who primarily work with Dawn and Linda. They do a great job. These audits are, they're a big task, and it gets a little harder and a little longer each year as more rules get added. I looked, and I think we had over 120 requests from them, documents we requested from them, just to give you an idea of the sense of a scope and audit, and that doesn't account all the questions that we ask as we start digging into the documents. So it's a massive task to prepare for these audits, and we thought that the city's preparation was excellent. They got us what we wanted, either on time or ahead of time, lets us get our work done timely, get this thing down the door. And I always had the sense that when we asked questions that they were available and that they took the audit very seriously, that they wanted to do the best audit they could and get it done, and I think they did. And the audit went very smoothy this year. I'd like to again thank, excuse me, thank Dawn and Linda for their preparation. That's all I have. Unless anyone has some questions.
Is there any questions from council? Thank you very much. And again, I'd like to commend our staff for their efforts in making this such a great audit and the support you gave the auditing firm for making sure that we met all the compliance and regulations that are out there. So thank you. Thank you all for all your efforts.
Thank you for the chance to work with you.
Thank you. Item number 11, consider an act on professional engineering services agreement.
Leanne, do they, I'm so sorry. Leanne, do they need to act to accept the audit?
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to accept the audit.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the annual comprehensive financial report as presented.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. Item number 11, consider an act on a professional engineering services agreement.
Leanne, do they, I'm so sorry. Leanne, do they need to act to accept the audit?
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to accept the audit.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the annual comprehensive financial report as presented.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 11, consider an act on a professional engineering services agreement, Acquiddity Engineering LLC, for the letter of map revision, LOMAR, for the transit-oriented district in Agora Park Development and its submittal to FEMA in an amount not to exceed $73,250 and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Glenn Barker, our Public Works Director, cover this item. Answer any questions.
Mayor, council, this is for the Agora District to take the floodplain so that it becomes buildable. So you send in a letter of map revision to FEMA to revise the floodplain so that places like Wolverine, Agora Park, and all those are outside the floodplain, and they don't have to pay flood insurance. And it's for $73,250.
Is there any question from council? Okay. Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
May I move? I move to approve the engineering services agreement with Acquiddity Engineering LLC in the amount of $73,250 and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 12, consider an act upon the alternative comprehensive tree preservation request by the applicant, Park Ridge Investment Group, LLC, to waive the remaining tree mitigation fees for the development of an 11.240 square foot retail building on approximately 1.2 acres located at 3180 Park Ridge Drive, case number AC25-001. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Matthew Lilly and our planning department will cover this request. Answer any questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Today, we're looking at the northwest corner there at Park Ridge Drive in FM 2181. The site is approximately 1.2 acres, and it is owned PDE 3 with a C1 commercial base. The current proposal is for a 10,392 square foot retail restaurant building. Site plan includes 63 parking spaces, and then the uses surrounding the site currently are vacant properties to the east and south, residential to the north, and the DATCO credit union to the west. So the current tree preservation that is being proposed, the site has 74 protected trees totaling 702 caliper inches. The proposal is to remove 65 of these trees, which is 612 caliper inches. The proposal includes the protection of nine of those existing trees with two unprotected trees. This accounts for 12.8% of the caliper inches on site. The applicant right now is eligible for credits totaling 250 caliper inches. This is from the 1.5 credit towards their 90 caliper inches. That's how you get the 135, and then the 115 caliber standard deduction credit. So right now, after subtracting those credits from the mitigation requirement, we land at 387 caliper inches or a fee of $58,000, $58,050. And so we have the alternative compliance standards that are found in the UDC, which gives the council discretionary power to look at the hardship that is demonstrated by the applicant and the proposed alternatives within their proposal that are more beneficial to the public good. And with this request, the applicant is seeking a full waiver of the $58,050. Just going into the hardship in this scenario, there is an existing fire lane on the site that was constructed as part of the DATCO development in 2016. This removed 39 protected trees from the site, and it also really made it difficult to surround, to design around the remaining trees on the site with most of those trees being located in the building pad currently. And so we have the landscape plan there on the left side, and then we have all of the bullet points for the additional design elements that the applicant elected to include. So they are going to be removing the existing four-foot sidewalk along Park Ridge Drive and replacing that with a five-foot sidewalk, and then they will be installing the shade trees required along the right-of-way between the sidewalk and curb to better screen the pedestrians from that traffic on Park Ridge. Similarly, on 2181, they're going to be moving the existing five-foot sidewalk further interior to the site. As you can see, it kind of jogs up and then back down at that intersection, and they're going to be providing plantings between the sidewalk and curb again. We weren't able to get the shade trees in that area due to some pushback from Techstar, and then there's also an existing forest main and overhead electrical lines there, so it really limited our ability to plant any trees there. Landscape plan is showing red yuccas and feather grass in that location, so that's just some vertical plantings to, again, screen the pedestrians from that traffic. And then finally, the applicant agreed to pull the building down further south towards the corner so it better frames the corner and just increases the overall aesthetics. So the estimate that was provided by the applicant for all of these improvements was $93,000, exceeding the $58,000 that they owed for the mitigation fees. And then here, we just have the comparisons between their first submittal and their current submittal. So you can see they've incorporated a lot more landscaping throughout the site. They shifted those sidewalks to allow the plantings between the curb and the sidewalk, and then they shifted that building down. And so staff is recommending approval as presented with the additional condition that any additional trees that should die or require removal during construction activity be mitigated at a rate of five to one, regardless of the size. And then we have the motion there, and unfortunately, the applicant wasn't able to come tonight, but I'm available for any questions you guys might have.
Council, I have any questions?
I do. So how many parking spaces, I talked to Scott about this today, how many parking spaces does the city require for that?
So they are actually right at our minimum requirement that's prescribed in the UDC. I wrote it down, but they're required 43 for their, 40 for the retail portion and 23 for the restaurants. So they're right.
So they're right at it?
They're right.
Because they're 63, right? Okay. Can you go back to the first submittal? Yeah, there. So it's, the, I will admit, in my packet, I didn't, I couldn't tell which trees were being saved. So you're, in one of your very first ones, it kind of showed because it didn't look like, I couldn't tell which ones were being saved and which ones aren't. So they're saving a cluster there on the hard corner, and then another up on Park Ridge, right?
Yeah.
If you go back, Matthew, it's in the beginning, one of your first, yeah, yeah, right there. Okay. Yeah, I don't, that's better. So, but they're only saving nine trees, so, so if they happen to damage or kill one of the nine, then they have to replace it five to one. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I would entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve case number AC25-001, Park Ridge Plaza Alternative Compliance Request for Waiver of Remaining Tree Mitigation with the condition that any subsequent tree mitigation resulting from construction activities be mitigated at a rate of five to one.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Council Comment and Future Agenda Items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public and our staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agendas. Mr. Burke.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Garber.
Nothing, just congratulations to staff again for the clean audit, and also to our marketing team. The growth on the social media was quite impressive over the years, so please be sure to pass that along.
Ms. Rell?
I'm just echoing that. Great job, guys. Y'all did awesome. So that's it.
Ms. Anderson?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Pickens?
I have nothing except to thank y'all too. Thank y'all.
Mr. Campbell.
Mayor, just real quick, want to make a quick introduction tonight, and I guess first all, congratulate our police chief. He's no longer the rookie department head in this city. So I want to introduce to you tonight Carolyn Seward. Caroline joined us, it's been about 10 days ago probably, started as our new director of Parks and Recreation. And so I know when we made that hire, we reported that to you and gave you a little bit about her background, but she came to us from the city of University Park, where she was the assistant director of Parks and Recreation. However, spent many, many years with the city of Denton, long tenure there in various positions in their Parks and Recreation Department, and she really just jumped off the page at us when she first applied, went through the interview process with our panel that we did internally, and just did a great job throughout the whole process, and we are thrilled she's here. I know Glenn's probably really thrilled she's here because he's already pawned off quite a bit of stuff to her in a very short period of time. So Caroline, we just wanted to welcome you, and we're thrilled you're here.
You have any comments?
Just thank you so much. The very warm welcome of everybody here in Corinth, and I'm really excited to be part of the team.
Okay. All right. At this time, we're going to executive session. We're going to be in Section 551071, Section 551072, Section 551074, and Section 551087. So at this time, we adjourn to executive session.